...to prepare them for a graduation by evidence. And then in their junior year, they would also take one semester and prepare them to actually do their portfolio.
I'm just confused on how this is a course. I was reading over it, did like, because it talks about they have to prove that they can graduate.
Well, before they graduate, the state is requiring students to show the evidence that they're ready to graduate. So during their college year, their high school years, they will be collecting work that they've been doing over the course of their years. And then they will be developing a portfolio or a presentation that could show that they have.
Okay. So are they going to be sitting in the classrooms doing this, or is this something that they're going to be doing throughout the school year?
Well, the course is a half a semester.
Oh, okay, so there is a...
Right. So there is a classroom experience.
Students wouldn't know naturally how to collect evidence. We don't ask students in the past history to do this. So this course prepares them to understand how to select work, how to write a...
So that's what they're going to do in the classroom?
That's what they're learning in the classroom.
If this is half a semester, what do they do for the other half of the semester?
One semester.
It's one semester for the full...
No, it says half credit each. Oh, freshman?
The freshman sophomore year, it would be a half a credit.
And then the whole junior year.
And then the other one would be a full credit.
I have to admit, I'm a little concerned looking at this, just because I think if it's a semester, this is something like when you go to a college, it's done over a two-day period, just before the school year even begins. I just, it seems like, I don't know, I just don't know if there's rigor here.
Well, you're going to see the whole curriculum. This is just the proposal for the class that we need to have approved. And then the curriculum will be much more detailed. So you'll be able to see all of the units that they're going to be doing, what they're going to be doing during those units.
So is there going to be a teacher?
Yes.
Just going to take it through all this?
Yes, absolutely.
Like, show them what to do?
Right. And hopefully, they'll be able to build a report with the students. And if the students have an issue during, while they're trying to prepare this, they can talk to them and see how they can help.
So they're going to get a credit to...
I have a credit in...
Get a point to them how to...
Yep. It's amazing. I gotta say, because I'm out of Rhode Island, Rhode Island successfully implemented graduation by demonstration, or graduation by evidence.
Something similar to this?
And these are courses, I did, I have what's called capstone courses. They don't have a capstone. So we have this mastery-based assessment. The problem is, we've not invented it yet, so it's hard for you to know what you're adopting. We can tell you a little bit of the...
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm confused on.
It is confusing. But a student will never get to graduation by law unless they produce a portfolio or an evidentiary packet. And that could be a presentation or a portfolio. But what do you do with a portfolio? So this, the first course is just to tell them what they have to do. And we successfully implemented it in the Coventry, and every kid knew what to be collecting. But now you get to the junior year, and now they have to put it together and submit it to a panel. So that someone has to help make sure that that's a coherent document, because if they don't do it in their junior year, they only have one year left to correct it. Or they may not walk across the stage, not by us, but by the state. You cannot, in the year 2024, you're not walking across a stage to get a diploma without this evidence.
This is a requirement of this.
It's another unfunded mandate, but it's a good thing.
Who are we giving this portfolio to the state?
Yeah, states required in the, when we gave you the listing of the new requirements, an extra help cost, you wanted personal finance, and the state required graduation by evidence.
So they're going to get portfolios to submit to this...
Not to the state, to us. And we will measure it against a criteria that says, we believe this is an appropriate evidence of a graduate. You get to do it before then, you wouldn't get to, we don't have to. But the freshmen that have entered will have to do this.
What sort of certification will the teacher need for this?
There is no certification qualified to do it, because any teacher should know how to identify the evidence necessary. Every teacher should be doing it in their own class.
So at some point, say, like in December, we're going to have 150 portfolios.
Right.
And teachers are going to be reviewing these portfolios and saying, Johnny's portfolio is good, Sally's is lacking somehow, which she needs to beef up her philosophy criteria in her portfolio.
Right. My encouragement to you is, you should approve the concept, because you don't have enough of the detail. And then let us build the rest of this. The high school has to know that you already accepted you're going to follow the state, but don't approve the substance, just approve the concept, so that we can give you better detail.
But how many hours is in the half-credit course?
There's going to be 45 82-minute classes, because there's 45 minutes of, I mean, there's 45 days on an A/B cycle in a 90-day cycle. So it's 45 hours at least of instruction.
So as a freshman, perhaps measures, someone's going to be taking students and saying, you know, sort of give them a list and a rundown of things they need to be saving.
Yep.
And they need to save all of them, put together the junior year.
Does that take away from a student who's doing like AP or anything when they get to their junior and senior year and they have to take that?
I don't see that happening.
You required only 26 credits for graduation, and you allow for 32. So they've got six to pay for.
I just got one more question. I'm sorry, but why can't we just give the students a list of things that they need to collect, and then put it together for them in junior year?
So, that's why I said, I think where you are, you need to, if you're willing to, accept the concept. We need to give you the detail, because it's a very sophisticated process. For example, the teachers would be identifying when the students are doing work, what work qualifies as a standard in algebra, geometry, and world literature. And they would say, this one qualifies. That's the work they would collect, and it has to be a B or better. I mean, you've got to show that it's good quality work. But then the student has to write at the end, each high school listed what are the six to eight attributes of a graduate. The student then takes from the body of evidence, eight courses a year, and takes evidence that says, here's the evidence that I can communicate to an audience for a purpose, that I can apply my learning in a real-life setting. They have to show that they can take real work in school and apply it in a real-life setting. That takes a lot of thinking on the part of a student. But students don't naturally do that. That has to be trained for them. And then once they start collecting the evidence, then they have to put it together with a teacher supporting them, saying, you could be clearer about this. Because they want anybody to review that to say, that's a good portfolio. You don't put 50 things in a portfolio, you only have to put eight to 10. But you have to show that they meet the expectations that the board has for a graduate.
And this is required by the state?
Required by the state. You don't just get grades and attendance hours. You have to also prove evidence.
So this is unfunded, too?
And it's unfunded.
So how's this going to affect the...
An extra class now, every day?
Well, in freshman year...
They're going to lose the study hall?
Well, they could.
Maybe there's going to be a study hall instead?
It could be the opposite to the study hall that we did approve for freshmen, because we think that's good.
So the state's not looking for portfolios?
No.
No.
Why is he doing it?
Because they're mandating it.
Yeah, but they're not looking at it. So if we, let me explain, let me explain. We tell the state that we feel our students are qualified graduates, based on what we see. That's what we're doing right now. How is this really changing that fact that we're telling the state, our students are ready to graduate? Why do we need this extra portfolio across?
Because when the legislature makes a decision, they stay in writing. Every freshman entering in the year 2019, 2020, has to take a cost called graduation by evidence or mastery-based assessment, and they have to have one full credit on their transcript. Just like you cannot graduate them without four English, four math, three science, three, you know, three history, one mastery day's evidence. You can't, you can't give them a diploma if they don't meet those requirements. That's a new requirement.
Right. So I do look in very much into accepting the concept of this, having further...
Accepting the concept with further information coming down later.
Well, we have a choice, they tell us too, so yeah.
Yes.
So we got to do it.
Much appreciated.
Congratulations, I made a package, all in favor. All opposed, any abstention? Sorry, we don't like those state mandates.
But guess not.
Well, then okay, let's do it.
Special education access aid.
So we've talked about this several times over the course in my special ed reports. And so what we're doing tonight is we're kind of putting exact numbers to it. So we're required to report to you all our unanticipated special ed costs. And what we have so far, the Board of Education has $342,250, $55,000 in unanticipated special education cost. And when you look at your sheet that's provided, the items in the chart below that are bolded and underlined articulate what this cost comes from. And so what we had is, we had three students come into us as a district over the summer that was unanticipated. So their tuition costs of $62,000, $69,000, and $69,000 is unanticipated cost. We also had a student that was outplaced in September, and that cost is $84,000, 460. But we also have one new bus run. So one of those students that came to us over the summer, that was a new bus route for us. That was a student that was already previously outplaced from another district. The parent moved into Plainfield. We become fiscally and legally responsible, but they already had a bus route that we didn't have established. So that's why you see for that specific student under Student C, the transportation cost is significantly higher than other students, because that is a new route, rather than in other places, it's a shared route. So those five items are making up the unanticipated cost. What we're doing right now, in February, the town will receive 75% of the special education excess offset or reimbursement. And we talked about this at the last board meeting. So what we're asking the BOE at this time should request a portion of that excess cost. And the portion that we have is $256,691 of the eligible $342,255. We did a filing in December. We will have another filing that we do March 1st. And the remainder of the 25% of the eligible special ed excess cost will come at a later date as well. I also included on here for you as well, kind of what this looks like from year over year. So last year in December 2018, right before I arrived in Plainfield, we submitted our excess grant submission, and the total amount of eligible costs was around 2.8 million. And when you do the formula, this is roughly coming to 36% of the total eligible cost is that we're eligible for that at a 75% reimbursement rate. So that's why last year, we had roughly around $757,000 coming back to us. When we look at the December 2019 filing that we just did, you can see in that next chart next to it, what we anticipate the excess cost being. And we say anticipate and what we expect, because you can never nail this down. This is all based on really what other towns submit, and how the state runs their formula, and available funding in a lot of ways. But right now, we are expected to receive a significant portion of that $873,085. We're expected to receive 75% of that in February. And at this point, we're asking for the board to seek some of that to help begin the offset process of special education tuition.
Where are we keeping that from?
Town? Is that the state?
State.
You said this money is coming to us. Us as in...
Us as the town. So the way that, the way the actual state statute is written, is that the money goes to the town treasurer, and the town treasurer is the town. The board, the board of finance and the town. It does not come directly to the board of ed. We need to actually go out and ask for those funds.
So you're asking us to seek $256,691?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a very precise number. How did you come up with it?
So that number is derived from four tuition costs. And those tuition costs, when you add them all up, is 285,186, plus the tuition costs, transportation costs of an additional $57,069. So the total is $342,255. We're asking for a percentage of that, because the town is not getting the full percentage of the excess cost in February.
So the town's not getting the 342,255?
No, the town is expected to get the total amount of excess cost that was eligible for the town of Plainfield and the board of ed is $873,085.
Okay, so come on.
The town will only receive 75% of what is anticipated in February. The remainder will come after we do the March 1st filing of excess cost.
What do you need tonight from us?
We're asking the BOE to approve and go seek and ask formally of the town $256,691.
This request will go to the board of finance?
Yes, we have to formally present that to you, so that it formally can...
To the board of selectmen and then...
Board of selectmen and go through the proper channels at the town.
The $256,691?
Right. You're eligible to, you're eligible to ask for the whole thing. We're trying to be fair, because they're not going to get all of it.
So you can come back and begin next month?
Right, if you have to come back in May.
In March.
Right. You could do that, but we're hopeful that we're going to have other kids come back. Like, we're taking one second grader back. You know, that's what we're trying to do, is not charge the town what we don't have to charge them.
No, we don't know.
You're actually looking for it to get reimbursed? From the special ed excess aid grant that was given to the town of the state?
Yeah, and I think the other way to think of it, too, and we put it in here, too, we actually use the word, we, terminology of offset. You know, like, this is not necessarily, it's not a competitive grant. It's entitlement grant almost. Like, we are entitled to this money, because this is written in the state statute that the state provides this to the town.
Yeah.
We have to do the lead work of entering the data, and when we get audited, present our contracts to the state and all of that stuff. But it is more of an entitlement offset for this excess cost of special education.
All right. So I motion that we seek from the board of finance the amount of $256,691 from the special ed excess aid grant to help offset expenses incurred for the special ed.
Right. And I'll second it.
Great. Just one more question, Mr. Sugarman.
Okay.
With that specific amount, we're covering those students, but is there any way that we could ask for extra to be able to start looking at enhancing our own programs to maybe put together a program to bring those students back into district debt savings?
It's a great question. I kind of want to say, you know, that's a lot of my mindset in my budget, and how I'm approaching our budget.
Because the reason I ask is, we only get special education access one time, right? The following year, we have to budget for these students.
No, this is every year.
Okay.
This is every year excess cost. So some towns don't put it in. They don't put it in, so then we're, there's more pot, there's more money in the eligible pot. So it might be a little bit more money. You have a right as a board of ed to seek all of it. And in seeking all of that, we would obviously be doing proactive things within our, within our programming to provide additional robust services, so we're able to, one, keep students in district, and bring more students back to district.
I just think that we've been so tight on the budget as it is. It's hard to create those quality programs for these students that are already struggling within our district, hence the reason they have to be outplaced. I feel if we can bring up the quality and to create a program with some of, a little extra of that money, we may be able to bring back more students and give them a great program within our own district.
So, go ahead.
Just, that's a very admirable goal. You should all support that. Let me tell you the reality, what happened. You remember when we had East Con here? So we brought East Con in for a few years. They cut our cost by $200,000. When they cut our cost by $200,000, we cut our budget by $200,000. What happened to the town, regrettably, is we used to get $700,000 in special ed excess aid. They cut $200,000 out of the special ed excess aid to the town, because they said, you no longer meet the threshold. You're not, you're not spending four and a half times your tuition for that child. So we saved $200,000 for the public, and they took $200,000 out of the town's fund balance. So, so what we do need to do is, what we're doing right now, so I agree with, we need to be more creative about finances, but we have to be very...
Careful.
Very careful about running programs that just reduce our cost just below the threshold. We either have to eliminate the cost altogether, or we're going to have to keep, like, if you just look, just look at the one student who's $126,000, right? That child, we're covered by special ed excess after $67,000. That's four and a half times. Every penny after $67,000 becomes excess aid. If you get that number below $67,000, like if the $89,000 were reduced because we were effective and brought it to 65, we'd get 0.8. So it's crazy that the department is creating disincentive.
Is there a way to create some type of extra enrichment under the guise of special education for these students that would attract them from another district?
Yes. And so it's a combination of multiple things. It's a combination of how I'm approaching this budget, and trying to capitalize on some students that are aging out, right? And we also have, just like the town and the board of ed has an MBR, special education has their own MBR. And so we have to, it's called maintenance of effort. So we have to maintain that effort. So we can't just artificially reduce our special education cost either, because that impacts our federal money for IDA, too.
So here's the... Because I want to support, this is a great conversation. I just want to support it. What you have to do is, you have to find a way in your budget to save the money, but not lose state aid. So for every child who deserves that money, you keep them in the budget and you get that money. But when the money comes back to you, you need to be using your regular budget to create these better quality programs. So the concept is right. The problem is, what I did for you, not about me, what I did for you four years ago, was we told East Con, do not lower each child by 20,000. Like, we used to pay $80,000, and they lowered it to 60,000. And that year, the town got killed, because they lost $200,000. So the next year, I had to say to East Con, we don't want 20,000 off of 10 children, we want three free children for $200,000. So what they did is, they gave us three children, and the other seven were fully recoverable by the town. They got the $200,000 in state aid, and we got the $200,000 saved for the taxpayers. It's, it's not a game, it's just, it's just the way the law works. You've got to be able to work within the system, because it's a disincentive for what we're doing. Every time we save money, they cut us. So I have to basically figure out how to get you to run a good program, but keep that number for that child at the number we should get recovered on, and then put the money on another special ed child who doesn't have a $65,000 cost. That's, that, we're never going to recover that. That's where we should be putting this money.
Right.
Put the money on children we're not getting recovered.
I think, to off that point, it's this collaborative effort from our board of ed budget, special ed budget, excess cost, and collaboratively working with the town, of like, making sure everyone understands the process that we're going through, to really be fiscally smart, but also rigorously enriching for our kids, too, at the same time.
All right. So the motion's been made and seconded to send the request of $256,691 to the town. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business. At this point, I'm just going to ask that the superintendent's report come before we discuss the following, just because it's a prelude to the report on attendance and some of the policies that you're going to hear.
So if you would just look at the back of your notes, the last two pages, and for the public, it's just positive information. So what I gave you is number one, let's look at what happened to students in the eighth grade. So last year, if you're there, 45 to 47 applications were made to Ellis Tech, 33 currently attend. And this year, we only have 40. We good? Okay. We had 12 to 15 applications, of which 10 are currently attending the Killenley Boag. We only had five applications this year. Now, the applications is the starting point. It only goes lower than that. Not every child might be accepted. So when you look at the bottom, we went from 97 applications down to 67. And out of 97 applications, only 63 are actually attending. Two-thirds of the kids who applied actually went. We have 67 applications. We're expecting maybe 40, 47 will go. That's to our credit and everybody's work. We appreciate everybody who's done something at the high school, the middle school, every one of you, because basically, it means more children are choosing Plainfield right now. That just says that it's going to help with the attrition of how many children are being transported and going to another site. We don't mind any child who wants a vocational education, that's just good for them. We just think some children are not realizing what we do offer. So that's really good news. You can see that there is a change. The second page is also important. You said, you're allowing this pilot to go through. I wanted you to see what, what this issue of the policy, which is the one that you're about to fully implement now, that, that says, we put in a consequence. But we not only put a consequence in, we put a restorative recovery process in there. So you know that we've had absenteeism for the last two years at the high school in excess of 15%, and so we're being cited for that. This year, only in the first quarter, there were 47 students who received the consequence of either one day up to five, and that's it, so one point, up to five, only 47 out of the 580 students. That's a really good low number to start with. That means that this is unauthorized. This isn't the kid who's out sick that mom said, that's cheap, that's authorized. A kid went to a college visit, that's authorized. A student was, was out for a field trip, I don't know. Whatever it was, those are authorized. These are the unauthorized. No parent gave a reason, the child didn't give a reason, and the school can't qualify why they should have been out. Of the 47, which is not a great number, but it's a lot better than it was in the past, 36 of those students actually made up work. So if the student maybe had 85 average, but they missed work, because they were out two days, they normally would have gotten zeros on those tests. And now, 36 out of 47, three-quarters of those students actually made up the work to raise their average. So the consequence they got of one or two points actually was muted. It didn't hurt them as badly. So we're doing two things at the same time. One, we're telling them, absence counts, and if you're out, you will lose credit. But two, we don't want you to get hurt, you should be making it up. And when 36 out of 47 kids made up work, which in the past, not they didn't always do that, that means kids are learning the lesson that they need to be doing the work. And so I think we're going to now show you at the end of the semester, how many of those 47 now don't have any penalties. Well, hopefully, you're going to see 47 will get out to 35. It's going to stay a number, because we know we can't fix socially everybody.
Right.
But, but I think it's showing that what you authorize is appropriate, it's making a difference, and I don't think it's doing as, the harm we're worried about, it is making some progress, because we're only at 47 and 36 actually made up grade work. So I think the policies that we're trying to put in place have merit for changing the way kids are looking at the importance of attending. And it's a bit good. You gave me this, but I think you concur.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so our attendance numbers are much better.
Right. Overall, just attendance in general, for the whole high schools, are better right now in the first quarter than they were last year.
All right. Moving on to policy revision, second reading.
Sorry, I left my agenda, but I believe the first policy for second reading was the student attendance 5113 policy. So again, this goes off of what we were just referencing in the superintendent's report about attendance at the high school. The policy, what we're looking to do is allow for the reduction of student grades for unauthorized absences. We kind of spell out in there what that looks like, with five unauthorized absences resulting up to five-point grade reduction per quarter. I think the one thing that came up, for each unauthorized absence per quarter, students will receive, thank you, students will receive a one-point loss per class. The main, I think one of the main things that was of, a talking point last time, was that this grade reduction cannot result in a failure of a course, was, was, was one of the main things that we discussed. And that is still in here. And again, I just want to note that the board attorney, when we reached out to them and had them review these draft policies, they did recommend that the establishes of the attendance review committee and the positive incentives be a requirement that we talk about putting in each school handbook. So at this time, at second reading, we're asking for the approval of this attendance insurgency policy.
All right. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve this policy 5113. All right, so I'd be looking for a motion to approve this policy 5114.
113.
113.
113, I'm sorry.
The next one.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, truancy policy number 5113.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next policy is policy, uh, number 5114. Uh, this is around student discipline policy. Uh, the main change in this policy was, uh, the result of Connecticut State law being changed where it narrows the authority of boards to expel students for conduct on school grounds or out of school-sponsored activity in which the conduct either violates a publicized policy of such board and is seriously disruptive of the educational process or endangers persons or personnel. What this is doing is that it's taking both. It's saying that you have to violate a, a board policy of, of actions that can be suspendable or expellable and it also has to seriously disrupt the educational process. Um, so it's putting further restrictions and making it, um, a, a higher bar to expel and discipline students. And that would be an example that goes through the conversation that we, that first brought up around vaping and issues of vaping where it might be just, vaping is in our policy as a violation, but that might only be impacting one student. And that only is impacting them and maybe they did it outside of class and it did not disrupt the educational process. The policy now states that that student should not and does not need to be moved forward to expulsion. Uh, we also did talk to the board attorney, and I'm just highlighting this point too because this came up too as well. We were talking about alternative to suspension and that was a thing that was being addressed. We talked about, we presented some ideas to our board attorney, they liked the ideas. They firmly believe that we should include those ideas and drafts of alternative suspension in the school handbooks to implement as an alternative option and not have it be specifically outlined in our board's policy for a variety of reasons, mostly which is an attorney legal reasons.
All right, so at this point, I'm looking for a motion to approve 5114, student discipline. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Last are the meeting dates for 2020. Um, so you have all of the meeting dates, just a note, November 12th is moved one day farther rather than the second Wednesday, it will be the second Thursday due to the way that that trend's day currently calls.
So, so the 12th is the day, but it's a Thursday, you're saying?
It's a Thursday.
Yes, it's a Thursday.
So we just need a motion to adopt that the meeting dates of 2020. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion, well, first, just a reminder, February 1st, Board of Ed budget meeting at Plainfield Central School, 8 o'clock breakfast, a 30 start of the meeting.
At TCS?
At TCS.
Yep.
Yep. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? For adjourn.